Good evening. I call to order the City Council meeting for October 6th, and we will begin with our invocation from Councilmember Keane.
Gracious and loving God, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, seeking your wisdom and guidance as we serve our community. Blessed is Council and our management team with discernment, compassion, and integrity, that every decision will reflect justice, kindness, and fiscal responsibility for the well-being of our citizens. May we work together in unity, honoring the trust plates in us, and striving always to uplift those we represent. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Jones, post one.
I'm here.
Councilman Connor, post two.
I'm here.
Councilman Ingram, post three.
Here.
Councilman Nascimento, post four. Councilman Rassie, post five.
Right, ma'am.
Councilman Keane, post six.
Here.
Mayor Lockhart?
I'm here, ma'am.
Sir, we have a quorum.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And for the purposes of minutes, a unanimous vote will be five.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Our first item is approval of our minutes from the September 15th City Council meeting work session, community development redevelopment tax incentive program blighted properties and regular, and the October 2nd fourth quarter developers' progress updated town hall.
Make a motion we approve.
Motion by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Ms. Keane. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Right. Next thing is the board appointment. So we have a new board, the Tax Allocation District Number Three Advisory Board. Still looking for one member to fill out that board. And we have the board appointment for the Camden County Board of Education, Sex Education Structural Review Committee. So if you have an interest in serving in any of those capacities, please see our clerk with an application. The report of our authorities, boards, and commissions. We have our financial report. And it's like, Murtagh is going to be here to give that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packets you will find the financial report of the city's revenue and expenditures through August 2025, which is the second month of fiscal year 2026. Do you have any questions?
Oh, ma'am. Good report.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And that leads us to the report of our city manager, Mr. Horr.
Evening, Mayor and Council, citizens. First off, let me start by saying I'm not sick, but I do have silences. And it's, I have, and for Dr. Moreno, I have been wearing my protective equipment. So it is silences. That's a whole different discussion. Anyway, demolition of the old city pool. Anderson Environmental has completed the lead asbestos abatement project. The city has received the report from Anderson Environmental that the project is clear. We're still waiting on the final disposal certification to close out projects. So as we receive that, public works crews can begin demolition process, and we utilize the project to train heavy equipment operators that are on staff on how to use the big stuff. In the right-of-way mowing, our city crews, route for city crews is down to 14 days after contracting additional road sections in waterfront park. As the crews are able to get caught up on items such as edging, we would expect the route time to decrease even further to a goal of 10 days. The downtown mowing areas, non-contracted, are running on a six-day route schedule. We are working towards a goal to get this down to five-day schedule. Our contractors, Coastal Greenery and Addys Lawn Care, are working on their respective roadway sections. Sidewalk and curb edging has been a topic of concern from residents due to weed killers being used instead of the mechanical edging. Contractors have been made aware of not to use the weed killer for edging, but only for cracks and joint weed control. Landscape Innovations has completed the removal and replacement of stone paved walkways in the first road median on Osborne with a cannon. Ditch crews, as of 10-3, the ditch crew number one is 75% complete on outfall ditches, and ditch crew number two just completed the ditches in the Palmetto Street area. They'll be moving towards the Douglas Drive Florence Street area. Ditch crew two is currently repairing a leak storm drain inlet on Stable Alley and cleaning ditches throughout the city that are urgent need of cleaning. The old place drainage project. Public works staff has received the signed easements from the three property owners and have sent them to the city attorney for recording. Once the easements have been recorded, the city can move in to establish the necessary swell to help mitigate the backyard drainage issue there. The Palmetto Street drainage, the public works department is currently working to secure a surveyor for the survey, and legal descriptions needed to submit to the city attorney to draft the easement agreement for the property owner to sign. For Council, there's a drawing in your, a map in your packet so you can see it. The Colrain Road, Winding Road Roundabout, city of Kingsland, the city of St. Mary's have teamed up on this project, including design, permit, and construction. The city will take the lead on the project. We'll see if St. Mary's having collaborative input through the whole process with expenses being split 50-50 between two cities. The RFPs are to be open on October 9th at 2:00 p.m. We are planning to be there. The Lamig Project, Lamig Projects for 25 and 25 Cemental are being prepared to send out for construction bids. The Lamig 26 projects are being developed to submit to City Council for approval prior to submitting to GDOT. Trash cans on Osborne Street, new trash cans. Five of them are scheduled to be delivered on the 6th, which was today. Once they arrive, they'll be assembled, and they will be installed on Osborne Street on, from St. Mary's Street to Dillonham Street. That's public trash cans, like you see at the waterfront, the black ones with the things in them, the blonde, and the whole nine yards. We had our RFP opening for the tennis courts and had no bidders. Mr. Williams is reaching out to make contact with vendors and get price quotes. We were hoping to have something for you tonight, but we're still waiting on a couple of bids. Okay? We had our RFP opening for the front porch repairs of Tourism Building with only one bid. Staff is still reviewing the proposal at this time. We'll have it in front of you one way or another here very shortly. We have reached out to GMC regarding the stormwater program or getting a price on getting the information updated and to help getting the building set up for that utility. We've also been working on how we're going to handle the utility internally with staff that we currently have. We hope to have it wrapped up in the coming weeks. For everybody that's in the audience and listening online, please listen to this. The Department of Natural Resources will be placing a used oyster shell collection dumpster at the Meeting Street Boat Ramp as early as next Friday. This initiative is a part of a statewide effort to collect and repurpose oyster shells for habitat restoration and shoreline protection. The program has proven successful at other docks throughout Georgia, and the DNR believes our location will serve as a great addition to these efforts. They will be providing additional information soon, posting on our website. No assistance or permits are required from the city as the lease agreement for the dock allows for these type of collection programs. So when they, you go down to put your boat in at Meeting Street, Meeting Street Boat Ramp, you see the dumpster, it's not for trash, it's for oyster shells. So we'll have more information on that coming soon. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our report for the evening. Unless someone has a question.
Does, was this agreement with DNR for the oyster shells have any language in there about how often they will collect and empty those things as to prohibit them from becoming onerous?
Oners?
I will let you know, as soon as we know, I will let you know. They contacted me today about this program.
We're just trying to get the information out as quick as possible.
Yeah, they're coming out of the packet for us.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Horr.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to set our consent agenda. So for, we have no old business items. For new business, we have the A, Authorization to Issue Notice of Nonrenewal of Marketing Agreement with Utility Service Partners Private Label, Inc., DBA Home Serve Service Line Warranty of America Program.
Consent.
B, Historic Preservation Fund Grant Award for Historic Preservation Commission Community Design Guidelines from Georgia Department of Community Affairs Historic Preservation Division.
Consent.
C, Designing for Resilience through Estuary Restoration and Defense Community Professional Services Agreement for Engineering and Design Services with Black &amp; Fiat, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Spine Program. D, National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System Program for Public Information Annual Report Approved.
Excuse me, sir, I do apologize. Jamie has asked if you could not put that on consent because she'd like to present that report.
Okay. Discuss. All right. Item E, Professional Services Contract for Geographic Information Systems with Coastal Regional Commission.
Discuss. Since you'll be up anyway.
Item F, Annual External Financial and Compliance Audit Services Contract for Malden Jenkins Certified Public Accountants. G, Winding Road Trail Project Right-of-Way Acquisition Services, Task Order Number Two, Amendment Number Three. Item H, St. Mary's Harbor LLC New Alcohol License. And item I, Rescind Resolution and Quick Claim D for Transfer of Ownership Regarding St. Mary's Civic Park and Lake St. Mary's, Camden County Public Service Authority, September 15th, 2025 City Council Meeting. So for the consent agenda, we have items A, B, C, F, G, and H. So with that, we'll have granting audience to the public. So if you have anything that you'd like to talk to us about, items on agenda or otherwise, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and try to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Bert Seale, 816 Riverview Drive. Two things. The item F, Annual External Financial and Compliance Audit Service Contract. You know, I know you all sent it out, and like, this is, you only had one. And I'm kind of wondering, where is, by the way, 6600 Aberdeen Street, Street 200, is that in St. Mary's?
It's in Savannah, I believe.
Oh. Savannah, okay. So, oh, Mr. Blonde and all you guys ain't even taking a chance? Ain't going for it?
They don't do audit services like this.
It's a very specialized field.
Oh, okay. So that's the Savannah. All it said was, "Street 200," so I didn't know who, where it was. You know what I mean? All right. I want to go back to Scrubby Bluff. You know, you know, when we get to, when, I'm trying to think of where, that whole area that the Shell, BP, KOE, my, those up, are come up, that comes up on the St. Mary's? City of St. Mary's?
I think most of the properties on the west side of the interstate are city of Kingsland.
Well, there's a little tease there. You see where the sign starts? Okay, for example, where the pilot, is pilot?
The street itself does go down to St. Mary's, and I think there's a piece of, there's a parcel down there somewhere that's flagged in. But most of what's on the west side is in city of Kingsland.
Even the pilot?
Pilot on our side is...
Well, there's a pilot on the west side.
Pilot on the east side is St. Mary's. Pilot on the west side is Kingsland, I'm pretty sure.
Yes. Oh, so everything on that side is basically Kingsland?
Yes, sir.
But they put up, they have that sign up there showing way back, the KOE and all that stuff, all that, the BP and Shell, all that belongs to Kingsland?
Yes, sir.
Wow. I didn't know that. Okay. That says a lot then. You know, that KOE, coach, parking, and all that stuff, all that's Kingsland? Ooh, I didn't know that. I thought that was past St. Mary's. We know and say them every day. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Attorney White, 102 Sylvia's Court. I'm glad to see that you're consenting item A on the new business, which is not to renew the contract with this company that's been using the city of St. Mary's emblem on their envelopes mailing out advertisements to property owners, thinking that is dealing with us with the consent of the St. Mary's government. And I read through your packet, and I don't think they have a leg to stand on when they don't remove, renew our contract with them. I think that, probably is up in February, I think. You have to do a 90-day notification that you're not going to redo the contract with them. So I hope that's true. The other thing is on item I, I'm not sure exactly what that means. And since that was just added today to the, to the agenda, I would like a better exclamation from Councilwoman Keane as to why she wants to rescind this agreement with the county.
We'll do that when we discuss it.
Dave Schmitz, 112 New Hammock Circle, up and set along. Just wanted to remind everybody that the 25th of October, Saturday, is, I believe, the 10th annual Alzheimer's Walk for Camden County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll blow this start.
Start at the waterfront.
At the waterfront park. And it ends at the waterfront park.
All right. There's no one else. We'll, okay. I'm sorry?
I have a question. I have a question. Jamie Galvez, 10007 McDowell, St. Mary's, McDowell Street. Res zoning of the industrial park. When will that come on the agenda? Or does it have to go through?
It's going to be at the next meeting?
It's already been.
It's already been done. Yeah. So, yeah, we, so, that's right. So the, you're talking about the Commerce Park or the Industrial Park?
Industrial Park where the airport's at.
Yeah, the St. Mary's Commerce Park. We do, we did that at the last meeting. It's already passed.
It's already passed?
Yes.
Sir, could you please repeat your name and address for the clerk?
J.A.I.M.E., first name. Nobody ever spells it right. Galvez, same thing. G.A.L.A.V.I.Z., 1007 McDowell Street, St. Mary's.
Thank you.
Is that good? Thank you very much.
All right. There's no one else. We'll vote on our consent agenda. So once again, to, we have items A, B, C, F, G, and H on our consent agenda. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by, Ms. Ingram, second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's unanimous now.
Yes, sir.
And now I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Keane, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that takes us into our new business. And I do want to comment, Mr. White, you brought it up on item A. Just so everyone knows, like you said, that we're moving forward with the steps to cancel that, but the contract goes on until early next year, February, March. And so you may still yet receive letters, but the process is underway. Okay? And with that, we've got item D, the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating. Ms. Stein is going to address.
Thank you, councilmembers and mayor, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for queuing up this presentation. So about this time every year, the Community Development Department issues what's called the Program for Public Information Report. This has to do with our participation in the community rating system, which is part of the National Flood Insurance Program. So in the report that you've received, I just wanted to go over a few key items. I also wanted to let you know that typically we do an annual recertification of this program. But on September 1st, I did receive an email in which FEMA has announced that the CRS program will no longer be, have a recertification review. So typically by October 15th, my office has to send all the information in to kind of an auditor, and they look at all of the work that we've done over the year, and they give us recertification of our levels of participation in the program. This year, due to a reduction in funding, they won't be doing it, but they just ask that we continue to operate business as usual. So that's what we're going to continue doing. So the Program for Public Information, this is a report that is typically the same every year. But I did want to highlight a few key things for members of the public. So our website, on the Community Development Department's website, there is a section on floodplain management. There are several great resources in there, particularly related to knowing your flood zone, the city's flood map, different resources for flood protection. We also have repetitive loss mailing. So every year, my department will send letters to those properties which have experienced repetitive losses due to flooding. We also, for any of you that are in the floodplain, you probably received a brochure from us that looks something like this. So that's part of our annual communications. And we also do public announcements. I did one at the work session or the development progress update last week, and we're doing it again here. A couple of new exciting things, though. Under the leadership of the county's floodplain manager, a woman named Ms. Cassie Turpin, she has re-engaged a countywide group of stakeholders that will meet on a quarterly basis to review our Program for Public Information and see if we can come up with some creative ways to get more information out there and more participation. And a great thing about that is that she's engaged the city of Kingsland, which is new to the CRS program. She's also engaged someone from the real estate sector, as well as someone from the home insurance sector. So we look forward to continuing those quarterly meetings in future. And one little tidbit of data, every year, starting, we stopped counting October 1st, so October to October, we tally all of the certificates of occupancy that have been issued for new structures in the floodplain. And this last year, we CEO'd 36 new structures in the floodplain. Any questions?
I do have a question. This is great, and I love to hear that there's going to be some meetings about public information. Will we be getting out any information for people that may be building or remodeling in a floodplain so that they're very aware of certain special code requirements in a floodplain?
Yes. So typically, when there is a property that gets, takes out a building permit, most building permits that do anything on the exterior or create something new will require a site plan. My office and I will check to see if it is in the special flood hazard area. If it is, then they have to get an elevation certificate, and they have to go through a series of steps. I mean, if anyone's thinking about remodeling or building in the floodplain, please come see me. You know, anybody, I pride myself on, anybody can walk into building and planning and get somebody from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., even juggling lunch hours. So please just come in and talk to us if you have any, any questions about that. And I think the remodeling piece, which we've had a little bit of trepidation with in the past, there is a substantial improvement clause in the National Flood Insurance Program and in our floodplain management ordinance. So just please be reminded, if you are, if you are doing renovations which constitute more than 50% of your existing property value, I'll be asking you for your elevations.
Great. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
The motion?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
He said so moved, so I'll say.
All right. Jumped on. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous now.
Yes, sir.
All right. Our next item then is the Professional Services Contract for Geographic Information Systems with the CRC.
Thank you.
My question is simple. You know, it's just a probably yes or no. Do we have anybody in house that has knowledge with GIS? Or did we have anybody at one time?
Yes and yes. So I'll speak to that. We used to, during my time here, we did advance a role in the department for a GIS manager. That particular employee didn't work out. And because I've learned, basically, are the extent of how much geographic information system work that we do in the city, I don't feel that that role is necessary anymore. One of the things that when I came into the role, we had an enterprise server, which is something in the GIS world that the county has. It's a very large investment in doing GIS. And frankly, we don't, we don't do that type of analysis and layer creation and those types of things that would warrant that investment or having a GIS manager. So we pared it down, and now we do this professional services contract with the Coastal Regional Commission. We had this in place last year, so this is just a renewal. Some of the great things that came out of this professional services contract was the integration of our zoning map and parcel layers that we have on the website with Cloud Permit, which is our online permitting system. So now those two systems speak to each other, and that requires a bit of a, a bit of coding that sends the county's data to our version of Cloud Permit and back. And that happens on a monthly basis. In-house, our junior planner, Ms. Elise Pierce, is excellent, incredible, potentially one of my best hires. And she is getting her master's degree from the University of Florida.
Say that again? Go down.
In, in city and regional planning, and she has really upped our internal GIS game. So she makes sure that some of the things that we're doing in-house are of really good quality.
So just to kind of clarify, we, we have the in-house capability to access the system and pull basic information, things we might need, but that we are relying on CRC for some of the backend programming and integrations and things like that. That's what this contract is about.
Yeah. Most recently, we had to update all of the city streets, and we worked with CRC to do that. And that actually helped us create new grids of the city streets for after emergency. for after, uh, emergency, uh, responses, so a couple of real good things.
Okay, any other questions? I have a motion to approve.
Some move?
Mr. Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingram, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. And that takes us to item I, uh, the possibility of rescinding the resolution and quitclaim deed for the transfer of ownership, and, uh, um, I'll let Ms. Keen start with the conversation about, about this.
So on September 15th, uh, the council, uh, one of the items that we approved was the transfer of our park from, and this is the park, uh, that contains the Aquatic Center, it's 40 some plus acres, from the PSA back to the city of St. Mary's. Um, one of the things that happened during that meeting was our city attorney mentioned that he had some concerns about that, so early this week, I spoke to him about that, and one of the things that I learned during that conversation is that when he was doing the title search on the property, um, he found an IRS lien, um, and as you may remember, there were some problems in the past, way in the past, uh, with the PSA and their payroll taxes, so I talked to my fellow council members, there were four of us, um, that did not know about the IRS lien, um, and the other two, from various fork and conversations that they were doing, did know about it. Um, I just wanted to bring that information forth, uh, because the lien, um, I've got the liens here from the county, totals approximately, uh, 1.1 plus or minus some money, and those liens transfer with the property, so...
Could you, you said 1.1?
Plus or minus, yeah, there's one for...
Yes.
Nine hundred...
We didn't, we didn't hear the million.
Oh, okay. 914,838, 594,309, and 36,120. So there's really, I mean, I don't think I would have voted the way I did, or, and this, by the way, was a consent item. We all knew that we wanted to get this done, we'd been working to try and get the parks out of the PSA and take over maintenance. So I think at this meeting, it was natural that it was a consent item. Had I known about the lien, I would have at least wanted to discuss it, especially with you all, uh, make you aware of it, so there's really no cut and dried answer on this, no good answer, really, but there are a couple of options that we have. Um, I understand from the attorney that the, um, one of the things we can do is try and negotiate something with the county and the city, uh, of Kingsland, the city of St. Mary's, and the city of Woodbine, as to their obligation regarding this lien, and essentially, we would be all, all of us would be responsible, because the PSA really doesn't have any money, it's funded by all of the cities in the county. So since it's a PSA debt, um, it's natural to think that we would all pitch in on that, but when you're dealing with the IRS, um, you're never sure. Once they have a lien on a piece of property, you know, they're, if they feel like they need to exercise that, they can, so my idea is that we just tap the brakes for a minute here and work out that agreement, and then, um, transfer the property after that. And is there any other commentary on that?
Go ahead. I knew about the, the issues with the IRS last year, um, and it just, I never thought that they would put a lien on the property, um, if we decided that we would pull out of the PSA, and it's, it's unfortunate that, once they put a lien on a piece of property, it's, we have to accept the responsibility of, of payment, uh, so I agree, maybe we need to just kind of slow our roll until we can get a, a handle on this and find out who's going to pay what, or if we have to pay anything in order to, uh, uh, get the land free and clear.
I would like to add one more thing. Excuse me, um, when our city attorney did the title search on the land, he did find the lien, and he did talk to our city manager and mayor about that, and, you know, as I pointed out, there are many different ways to look at this, um, and I don't know that any particular way is wrong. Some ways, you know, you could say, well, that's down the road, and surely everybody will agree to pitch in when the time comes, but it could be two or three years, maybe even longer, before this gets resolved, and, you know, by their very nature, our city government councils change every couple of years, so I tend to go with a conservative approach, and that is to work that issue out first and then transfer the property after that.
Yeah, those are definitely all, uh, very valid concerns. Um, I do know the PSA, um, and their board changes as well, um, they do have, you know, a current board that's been on top of the situation as far as they have made multiple, uh, attempts to settle the debt at a reduced amount, uh, those have failed, but this last, or where they're at currently, is they have hired a law firm that deals with this specifically, uh, with the IRS, uh, the IRS now directly will deal, and they're currently furloughed, but, uh, when they come back into business, like Ms. Keen said, it could be six months, but it could be three years, you know, there's no timeline of when this, uh, could be situated or settled, but with the, um, law firm, to my understanding, that's been, uh, hired, that, you know, they do deal with this with city government, and, uh, the IRS would speak directly with them, and it's not common for the IRS to come and just want to, you know, like seize or, uh, you know, auction off a property that's government-owned, uh, and they wouldn't just come and do it. Uh, yes, we do need to, you know, have clarity, you know, who, whose responsibility would be, but, you know, like Councilwoman Keen described, you know, it is a shared debt between the county, Kingsland, St. Mary's, and I know Woodbine is a mild contributor and has been, but, uh, you know, they're pulling out of the PSA. We do need to get clarification that, you know, make a new agreement of some sort, it be it's separate or an amended agreement, that would outline worst-case scenarios, and that's what this would be, worst-case scenarios, if that were to happen. Um, but it is something we have to deal with either way, because it was, you know, funded by, you know, the, the local governments, uh, the PSA, and yes, the PSA had its issues, uh, and, and we're trying to, you know, obviously pull away from that. As far as not accepting the property, uh, we're almost in a position, and there is no right answer here, uh, that there's not a direct right thing to do, because it's a hairy situation, no matter which direction we choose to go. Uh, you know, the PSA approved their budget, which is a significantly reduced budget for managing sports and only maintaining the property, uh, at 10, 1050 Wildcat Drive, uh, you know, there is no budget for any maintenance of any park, uh, you know, so January 1, there's no anything from the PSA, so it is, you know, going to be our responsibility, which we, you know, accounted for with these discussions. Robbie, I, I know that in 2019, uh, were, were you in your position 2019? Perfect. Um, so there was a insurance settlement agreement, um, that was roughly, we're going to use a rough number, about $600,000. I know, just speaking with, uh, the chairman of the PSA board who's on Kingsland City Council, you know, they got roughly $200,000 they set in account, uh, you know, so whenever a settlement would come, that they have that sitting there. Uh, do we know what we did with our share of that insurance settlement? It was, uh, it was a lawsuit by the county, um, and, uh, it was distributed out, and, uh, there, there were some monies there, so...
Probably mid-2019, I think.
Correct, that's right about, right about that, so, uh, I'm curious what we chose to do with our collection of that, uh, you know, if we by chance have set it aside, and if you don't know about it, maybe we haven't, I don't know, don't know finance. Okay, um, so I know they set theirs aside, so, uh, but, uh, neither here nor there, um, you know, we're all going to have to do something with the park, uh, as far as, you know, it seems that we're going to take it over one way or another, that's what we want, we want to put money into it, we don't want to put projects on hold, uh, it is something we have to work out, but I, I, I don't know that terminating our existing decision is the best thing to do right now.
Well, hey, you know, we've been putting money into this park, which has been owned by the PSA routinely. We've been, you know, repairing the water park, and we're about to put some money into some tennis courts, and I don't really see that that needs to stop. I mean, I don't envision that this process of tapping the brakes on, you know, approving the transfer of the property takes a very long time. If in fact, everybody is willing to pay their part when the time comes, um, when we've negotiated something with the IRS, then it should be a pretty simple process to incorporate that into our agreement, and I don't think it should take that long, and in the meantime, it doesn't hold us up. I don't think that we should stop doing what we're doing with the parks, because we've been doing some things with the park, even though we don't own it. I just think, when you have a lien on a piece of property, you want to have an, an agreement about how that lien's going to be paid before you accept the lien and the transfer, because we've had already two failed offering compromises, we're working on another one, the county, the PSA is working on another one, and they've got a very good firm working on it, but the likelihood is that, you know, we're not going to get an offer that reduces the whole liability. And in the 2023, even though the liens add up to about 1.2 million dollars in the 2023 audited financial statements for the PSA, there's a footnote in there that says that the liability was 1.5 million. So I don't, we, nobody really knows what the balance is right now, and that's another reason why I think we just need to proceed with caution, and that is my only reason for bringing it to everybody's attention.
Mr. Blackaby, can I ask you that, that you, did you prepare the, uh, the quitclaim, uh, information for the city of Kingsland as well to take back the Lyons Park?
I have not, yeah.
Okay, because did they, I believe they have, they have done that already, is, uh, they were supposed to have done that.
I don't believe they've done that yet.
No?
I don't believe they have.
Okay. It, uh, you know, one of the things that, uh, you know, we, we have been talking about this property since January, um, uh, and not knowing quite who owned what, and there was a lot of debate about, did we own the land underneath the Aquatic Center, did the county own it all, you know, there was, there was a lot of back and forth about it. Um, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that, uh, you know, this property and any property that, I would assume, I don't know why, it would just have been placed on one piece of property, uh, but if the IRS had a lien on, on properties, um, owned by the PSA, then it would have been all the properties owned by the PSA, assumedly, is that a fair assumption, or would they...
I think that's right. The question that I've, that I have is which properties were actually conveyed to the PSA, because talking to the PSA attorney, he indicated that there were a fair number that had been intended to be conveyed, and there were. Um, I think in particular, there's a park in Woodbine that never got conveyed to the PSA, so that's still owned by Woodbine, and then I'm not sure about some of the county parks either.
Okay.
So would it be accurate that the lien would be also attached to 1050 Wildcat Drive for the PSA, uh, offices and Lyons Club Park in Kingsland?
Right, it's actually owned by the PSA.
So if you look on the public records...
I was, let me finish, please. So the, um, you know, the lien's going to exist, whether we own it or, or expect the PSA owns it, and the possibility of the property being seized and sold at auction or whatever in order to satisfy this, you know, this amount due to the IRS is a possibility either way, um, and, you know, that, that was just kind of the reality I thought we were dealing with, and I know some of the steps that the PSA has been taking with, as Council, uh, Member Keen mentioned, that they had filed to have this dismissed in two prior occasions, but when they had done that, they had not done all of their quarterly filings, and so it was an incomplete record, and so they were summarily just, uh, you know, ignored because they had not had a complete tax record yet. Uh, so in the recent months, that complete record has now been filed with the IRS, and the PSA is currently, uh, has done everything that the IRS, uh, has asked of them in order to move this process forward, and so as, as those are now being documented, as being filed by the IRS, the, uh, tax firm that the PSA has hired is going to be, you know, seeking for some dismissal of some of the fees, interest, or, uh, actually partial fees, we don't know what will happen there. But my other contention was, is that, you know, this, uh, even though there's no language specifically to it in the, uh, that I could find or that we've reviewed yet, that indicates that, um, specific debt of the PSA is, would be shared by everyone as part of the, the PSA, um, you know, in all my conversations with, uh, leaders from the other cities and the PSA, that, uh, it is, you know, clearly understood that this debt is, belongs to the PSA and thus belongs to everyone, and, uh, you know, in speaking with Mr. Blackaby today, in the new IGA that, you know, that we enter into, my question really kind of was, does this belong in the IGA even? Because if Woodbine, who had voted previously not to join the new IGA, uh, they would still, would not, they still be liable for their share of this debt, you know, um, and I think we would all agree, on a morals standpoint, that yes, they would, I mean, they were part and parcel to this when it occurred, you know, 15 years ago, and, uh, under that IGA, um, but as, as Councilwoman Member, you know, Keen pointed out, we, you know, people are people, and people and money, they do things, and so, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea to, to have a written agreement that specifies, uh, and everyone I've spoken to would kind of agrees to this, or kind of, but does agree to the fact that it is shared debt, uh, it belongs to all of the municipalities and county equally, or not equally, but based on their proportional share, uh, of this debt, and so if we can add that into the new agreement, if Woodbine does choose to join this initial agreement, if they don't, then I think we have to have an agreement outside of the IGA that addresses this debt if we're trying to get something in writing. Um, but, you know, the cities and the counties, we have, there was, 20 years ago, I don't know how many of you were here, but there were a lot, there used to be a lot of back and forth, uh, there was a lot of negativism between the municipalities and the county and, and, uh, nasty working relationships, and things didn't go well, that, you know, that has much improved in these years, and everyone has good working relationships, and I, you know, naive as I may be, I, I do trust the relationships of, of the other leaders that we have, that, you know, that we can settle this, and so for that reason, I didn't necessarily personally think that it was, uh, necessary to step backwards from the progress we made into getting this property in our name, because that lien is going to exist, whether it's in our name or it's, you know, uh, back at the PSA, and if the IRS wants to seize the land, they're going to seize it, we're going to lose it either way, if that's what happens. Uh, and, you know, there's, there's no negotiating tactic or leverage that putting that land back in the PSA and away from us is going to protect that land, uh, you know, if, if we don't have the buy-in from the other partners, and so I don't really see that the land as being a negotiating leveraging tool, uh, to us coming up with a plan, a legal plan that says we will all share in the liability, uh, in, in a legal... a legal document, because it's not built into the current IGA, it's not built into the previous IGA, and so we do need some sort of document to that end. I just didn't think that in the way of moving forward with our recreational plans and the things that we want to do with the park, maintaining and improving the parks, that we made this step, and if the county has not signed the deed for this and it actually completed the transaction, I believe they would be willing to tap the brakes, as you said, and hold off on that if we asked them to. No rush necessarily, it doesn't do anything for them one way or the other, but I believe we can move forward and get the relationship, the, the agreement that we need, you know, to put in, in, in legal terms, how this liability will be taken care of, and, and that was just kind of my, my statement.
I agree with you 100%, you know, but I believe in putting it in writing, you know. I trust them and everything too, but we probably need to change the wording in the IGA to...
100% agree, but I just, I don't see that transferring the land back and forth, you know, really affects the outcome of that.
We can, we can continue to go the route that we're going, you know, it's not going to pay the bills, IRS, it's still going to be a problem, but what I wanted to do was to make sure that the county and the cities have a shared interest in what's going to be paid back. That's all.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to not rescind a resolution.
So I don't know if that's, can we do that in that order, or make a motion to add it to the?
I think the agenda item was framed as it's going to be a motion to rescind it, so I think you could just take no action if...
I'm just taking no action for now, and we could reconvene at a different meeting if needed on this, but I do think we need to.
Well, I guess the proper thing would be to ask if there is a motion to, to rescind.
I'd like to make a motion that we rescind the resolution and quitclaim deed for transfer of ownership regarding St. Mary's Civic Park and Lake St. Mary's Camden County Public Service Authority.
Okay, is there a second?
My vote.
Second.
Okay. So is there any other discussion?
I'd like to ask Mr. Blackerby if he will advise us on this, since he knows a lot more about this than we do.
Well, one thing that I totally agree with is there's, there's not a right or wrong answer here. There are several ways it could play out with the lien being in place. I mean, hopefully, the PSA stays around for a long time and is fully funded and pays off the lien, and that's hopefully what happens, and I would assume that's the most likely outcome. If you take, take the transfer of the ownership, and for whatever reason, the PSA isn't fully funded in the future to pay that lien off, then we're holding the property subject to it, to the lien, that is. And you could have a situation, maybe very unlikely, but you could have a situation where the IRS comes looking to get paid and says, we're going to levy on that property, and chooses that one to be the target of their levy. On the flip side, if you, if you leave it in the ownership of the PSA, and the PSA doesn't have funding to continue paying it, then you're still not in a good situation, because then you've got a PSA board that you've only got two members on, and they could decide, you know what, we don't have the money to pay the IRS, we're just going to give them the property in lieu of paying it. That's a possibility as well. So there are multiple bad outcomes, and there's hopefully a good outcome that, that's going to happen, which is that the PSA remains funded and pays this off, but it's, it's really a matter of your comfort level, I guess, in terms of how to move forward and your relationship with the other cities and the county. I do think it's imperative, and this has been said multiple times, we do need to address this in the intergovernmental agreement going forward, and we need to include a provision that clearly provides that the liabilities and the debts of the PSA are jointly shared in accordance with the percentages by which we're funding the PSA, and that that is an obligation that will survive the intergovernmental agreement, because right now, we don't have that in place at all.
Right, and we do not have it in our, our intergovernmental agreement has expired, is that correct?
That is correct, but even if we had it, it wouldn't speak specifically to this, because even under that intergovernmental agreement, any city or the county could withdraw upon 90 days' notice, and it stated that the funding obligation ceased upon that 90th day. So that's got to be addressed, and, and we're already, we're already trying to, you know, hammer out a new intergovernmental agreement, and still trying to figure out how Woodbine will fit into that, if at all, but while we're, while we're working on that, I think we need to address this as well in the new intergovernmental agreement.
So I would like to change my motion. Let me withdraw the motion that I just made, and change it to, based on the advice that we've had, that we, we can vote on rescinding, but I think that...
Hold on a second.
I just want to say, Ms. Keen, because we do have a motion on the floor...
We have to vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Second.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. So you have to withdraw your second.
Okay, so the original motion has been withdrawn and seconded, and do we need to vote on that withdrawal, or, or is it just withdrawn? Okay?
And the reason I'm doing that is the risk of not owning the property and the ultimate need for the IRS to seize it and us not having control of the park. But I am, I think that this was a discussion that we should have had, and the council should have been informed, all council members, that there was, excuse me, in fact, a very large lien on the property before we were asked to vote on whether or not to transfer it. So I think the discussion has been fruitful in that respect, and I appreciate everybody's thoughts on it.
So we're back to, I don't know if that was a new motion, or if we're just back to...
Uh-uh, just comment.
There is no motion.
No.
Okay. So for lack of a motion and second, the item, I fails, no action.
There was no motion.
Right. That's what I said, with the lack, with the lack of motion. Okay. Announcement of our counter.
Yes, sir. On Wednesday, October the 8th, there is, Bobby, are you still having a 10 o'clock AM, or is that the one you moved? You still having it? Okay. There will be a pre-bid for the St. Mary's Road Intersection Improvement Project, Espinaw Boulevard here in Council Chambers, and again, that's 10 a.m. on Wednesday, October the 8th, and DAS, Development Authority of St. Mary's, has moved their meeting to October the 8th at 5:00 p.m. in the Main Street office. On Thursday, October the 9th, in the Main Street office at 9:30, we'll have the Orange Hall Management Committee meeting. Again, that will be in Main Street, followed by the 5:00 p.m. St. Mary's Intercoastal Gateway meeting in Main Street as well. And on Monday, October the 13th, at 8:30 a.m. in Main Street, the Downtown Development Authority meeting. On Tuesday, October the 14th, there's a 5:30 p.m. Planning Commission meeting, and also the Planning Commission has added a work session on that day. Is it 4:30, Jamie? 4:30 work session on that day. On Thursday, October the 16th, tonight, which will be, which has already been sent by our Finance Director, that will be the first two of the public hearings on the tax increase regarding the military. Again, that will be Thursday, October the 16th, here in Council Chambers, at 10 a.m. and again at 6 o'clock p.m. On Friday, October the 17th, at 9 o'clock, we will have St. Mary's municipal court trials, followed by the 11 o'clock a.m. plea and arraignment. And on Monday, October the 20th, also sent out today by the Finance Director, will be a 5:00 p.m. public hearing on the military, followed by the 6 o'clock p.m. City Council meeting. Thank you, sir.
Come in. All right, Councilmember, comments?
Um, I just want to, I didn't get a chance to talk to my cousin back there with all that Steeler gear on, but the Jaguars will be playing tonight at 8 o'clock, so you need to go home and put on your teal.
Um, we won't be having another meeting before then, so, you know, our First Friday's been rebranded to a Live After Five, it's, you know, and it's not First Friday anymore because it might not be on the First Friday, which is the case this month. So in an effort not to compete against other local activities, especially Wildcat Football, they're able to make this event flexible and move the dates, and it's been a great event. They've actually enhanced it, I think we're on about our fifth month, our fifth month, I believe, or sixth, somewhere in there, where we've had increased vendor activity, music, live music vans, it's just a good time. There's kids' activities, so if you haven't made one, please do check it out. It'll be October 17th this month. It'll be the 17th, we're Live After Five, starts at 5:00 p.m.
Heard nothing but good things about it.
Check it out.
I've been there, but I mean, everybody's talking good about it.
Yes?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city staff, volunteers, and the Quanians for the seafood festival in St. Mary's. It was very, very well received, and I know the rock shrimp was well received, and it was a pleasant treat having rock shrimp back for the first time in over 10 years, so. Thanks, Angela.
Anyone else? Okay, and I'll just echo Mr. Rassie's sentiments about the city staff and, you know, and the Quanians, it takes, it takes a lot of people to put on these festivals, and a lot of hard work, they go behind the scenes from everyone, and even though the day started out a little shaky with some rain, we ended up with a beautiful day, and it was a great festival, and I hope you had time to come down and check it out, and if not, first Saturday in October next year, you know, we'll be right back here again for that, so please join us.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to apologize. The Scarecrow Stroll, Angela, did you want us to announce that the date of the Scarecrow Stroll?
Yeah.
October 26th, from 1 to 5.
The microphone's not on.
October 26th, from 1 to 5, is the Scarecrow Stroll.
And it's on our Facebook page, and they can call if they have questions.
It's on the Tourism Facebook page and 882-4000, you can call if you have questions, so. Visit stmarys.com. Thank you, Angela. All right. Clear concession. Have a motion to adjourn? Show movement?
Second.
Have all those in favor?
Aye.
When have we ever had a meeting and it's just early?
I know.
Let's go home and eat dinner.